All right, welcome everybody to the regular school committee meeting of February 11th, 2014. Calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. As usual, first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have the minutes from February 1st, 2014, and the minutes from January 28th, 2014, and the warrants of February 14th, 2014. There are no comments or objections, we consider them all approved. Moving along to correspondence. I know we had some in Bolton.
We had quite a bit in Bolton.
Yes.
On full day kindergarten.
Full day kindergarten, absolutely.
Urgency to make the decision to add full day kindergarten and do it quickly so that people could make decisions and choices they can make. I also had a Bolton parent ask me whether we could get a new school like Stone. So I think I reminded them that we actually kind of have a new school. And then I did receive some correspondence from the Bolton Advisory, one of the members of the Bolton Advisory Committee asking us to consider refining the budget and to look at the E and D funds and the reserve line, salary reserve line from the budget which George was involved in that discussion. So I think, I think we responded to those, that we would be definitely looking at opportunities within the budget, speaking with you about it. And he was pleased with the responses, I think, at the moment forward.
So we can talk about that while we talk about the budget. Just a little bit more about the kindergarten. We had, how many? Four, five?
Four there in the packet.
Four letters that we've shared with everybody concerning the shortage of space in the full day kindergarten classroom. And that we have as an agenda item as well, which we will be discussing at length shortly. Did anybody else have any other correspondence you have?
I have an email concerned about class sizes of the high school, how this freshman class is really big. The next one coming up is also objected to be really big. I think the classes are gradually getting larger and we should focus some of our funds on class sizes and stuff in the high school. Thinking that has a real big impact on the community, I don't care what our high schools are.
Okay.
I think that was in kind of rebuttal to importance of full day kindergarten versus high school, which I said is not one against the other, it's just people have different concerns at different times.
Okay. Any other correspondence? Superintendent's report?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. This evening we have two presentations to kick us off. First, I'm going to go a little out of order. We have our auditor here tonight and he introduced himself to the school committee and he'll be doing our FY '13 audit.
Good evening. My name is Dick Sullivan, the engagement partner of the district and I'm from Powers Sullivan. And what I'd like to do in the next five or 10 minutes is just kind of give you an overview of what we do and what the results were. But I think you should be, you know, knowledgeable about from where you are in your positions. From a standpoint of the audit, we do it in two phases. We look at, we do some work in the spring, which focuses on things that aren't the, that's the mean, the budget can be looked at, any debt can be looked at. We can do some internal control testing, which deals with the revenue cycles, the disbursement cycle, the payroll cycles, as well as general summaries. And then we come in after year end. This year we came in the week of 9/16, which is pretty good when you consider the fact that it's not too far after year end, which means the books were closed on a timely basis. And we probably could have been here a little sooner, except Asket doesn't allow us to be there as soon as that, sooner than that. What I can share with you is the audit team, which has historically been the same, was what I would call audit ready. They had a very good package for us, the treasury was ready with all their bank statements. Pat Maroni, who we rely on a lot for a lot of the financial stuff, she had everything ready for us. So my team was able to come in here and connect what I consider to be a pretty efficient audit. To give you an idea of what we look at at the year end, the balance sheet is what I would call uncomplicated. You have cash and capital assets, the primary two assets. Cash at the end of the year was $10 million, capital assets was a little over $20 million. Excuse me, what we do is we audit those particulars, particularly the cash standpoint because of the liquidity of it, the ability for potential errors to occur, and obviously it's cash. You have to make sure that it's all there. And it in fact was. On the liability side, on the other side of the balance sheet, you have four primary liabilities. You have your payables at the end of the year, which are a little over a million dollars. You have some accrued payroll, which is supposed to like, you know, the payroll that's going to be paid afterwards, is $1.4 million. And then the two big guys are the bonds payable and your OPEB liability. And I think I've probably talked to this group about the OPEB liability for a number of years. This year it is on the balance sheet at $17.6 million. And what that means is you should have $17.6 million in the bank accruing interest to cover your future costs of healthcare for your retirees. And on the bonds payable side is a very clean $6.4 million. So after we go through, we do all that preliminary testing of internal controls, make sure everything's right, we spend a lot of time at year end focusing on the balance sheet and also doing what I call analyticals. Meaning that we look through the P and L and compare it to the prior year, compare it to the budget, look for any unusual items that might highlight for us that we have to do additional testing or additional procedures. I didn't find anything like that. It was pretty straightforward the way things went. When you think about the, how the results were, we kind of focused on the general fund. I heard somebody mention E and D earlier today. That's where a lot of the emphasis put from the analytics, because the, what we call the non-majors or the special revenue funds kind of take care of themselves, because they're federal, state grants, any deal of school choice. Overall, the general fund broke even in fiscal 2013. They had a small surplus of like 100K. The good thing about that though is you would anticipate to use a pretty significant sum of your E and D, which you didn't have to do because of about a half a million dollars in extra revenue that came in. It related to transportation, which you get about $60,000 more. You got a Medicaid reimbursement of about 148K. Chapter 70 came in higher than you anticipated when the budget was originally done of over $200,000. And you also had some child school reimbursements of 44K. Those four components make up the half a million dollars of extra revenues, which made it so you did not have to use your E and D as much as you thought you were going to have to. And expenses, they came in almost on the number, 1.3% less than you anticipated, spending about $500,000. So when you combine those two, you looked at, you thought you were going to use E and D of about a million dollars, you ended up not having to use it for FY '13. I just want to stop you for one second. I'm not really directed, but that's the exact point I was trying to make, unless I ticked it to the Bolton Advisory last week and they answered the question as to why we restored back at pretty close to the same level. If you listen to the things he discussed, I mean, the 1.3% of the budget, I would contend, was I contended that night, was just good management of the budget. We don't spend every dollar, we don't feel compelled to spend every dollar if we don't need it. We still look for efficiencies. And the revenues that he described as the increase, the lion's share of that increase was chapter 70.
Right.
Which we wouldn't have known about until after the budget started. And the other ones were things that are just revenues that happened to break in another direction that we just, they change every year. Those are relatively small numbers combined together, they make a couple hundred thousand dollars. So I'm sorry to interrupt the conversation.
Well, that's fine.
But I just think it's a point in point relative to the budget discussion and relative to specifically the questions we have about E and D, and that's why it's so complex.
Is what you just said in your letter?
It's, you know what, you have to kind of know what I know and maybe pay attention to parts of it to understand it.
Well, the reason I ask-
It's on the budget to actual. And if you looked at page, I'm not a page turner, but this is probably worth while. If in the report you would turn to page 38 and 39.
Yeah.
You'll see a half a million dollars of extra revenue, you'll see the under expenditure of about $597,000. And I guess all the under, I should say, all, pretty much all of the revenue excess was due to the intergovernmental, which is chapter 70, and the transportation matter came in. The other money was related to what I say, school choice and the Medicaid reimbursement. Those are things that really don't necessarily get predicted as part of the budget when it's being set up.
It wouldn't happen again.
It could, but the, okay, one more thing on the E and D piece. As soon as I heard somebody mention about the E and D, and I know how sensitive this is, you, first of all, you have the overall restriction of 5%. You can't have more than 5%, all right? The other part about it is you also put aside FY '14, $1.135 million of E and D to balance the budget. So there's not an accumulation of E and D, you're restricted by law to not have more than 5% of your prior year appropriation. And, I mean, you may have better revenue expect, actual collections this year, but you did balance the FY '14 budget using $1,135,000 worth of E and D.
So the reason I ask if it's in here is because I want to make sure that anyone who has an interest in it knows where to find it and understands what you just described to us. Because I am not going to be able to respond.
Those two pages that I referenced to you show that what was the budget and what were the collections. And I just gave you the reason, particularly on the revenue side, what those were.
Okay. So 38 and 39 are the pages?
Are the pages. It's called the budget to actual schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. School choice did better, it's got a healthy balance right now. From a capital asset activity, you really only had one thing done, if you turn, put it into high school, you can spend about $2.1 million on that. So if I was to sit back and, again, there's a lot of work to be done here. The thing is with your financial statements, they're not complicated because you don't have as many moving parts as some of the municipalities may. What you should walk away from this is that the opinion here is the best opinion you can get when it's related to a set of financial statements. It's called unmodified opinion. Every question that we asked was answered timely, was answered accurately. The staff had a sense of urgency related to it. And from my standpoint, I would consider this to be another good year in the show room. I'm not talking about operationally. Honestly, if you break even, you're breaking even, but you're kind of designed to do so, which makes sense to me. But from an internal control standpoint, which is, if I was on the outside of the desk, that's what I would want to at least have referenced, we didn't find anything wrong. You know, we're in the business of negative assurance. We don't really tell you that things are going good. If something was bad, I'd be standing on the chair and telling you. There's two other reports, and I'll go through this briefly because they're quick. The first is related to the federal awards report. That's, the school spends more than $500,000 worth of federal grants. The primary one relates to special education. This year total expenditures were $1.6 million. Special education was almost a million dollars of that. We tested for compliance, we tested for what they call appropriation and proper cost. We also tested for its reporting. We found no issues relative to that. So what you also have here is a federal awards report, which has a clean opinion, meaning there's no question costs and there's no findings. The final thing is the management letter, which is kind of like you say, thin to win. There's only two comments in here, there's two comments. One is an informational, there's two comments that I want to, I would share with you, they're more like a refining of good business practices or processes. Because the processes that are in place, we just thought there might be a better one to happen for this one. One related to doing a periodic inventory of the assets of the school. Because some, you know, things like this don't tend to walk, but something like this could. So there's ideas and priorities in terms of risk assessment as to inventory your assets, get an idea what was there last year, and maybe one or two years down the road, look at it again and find out if it's still there or where it went. The other part was, it's just a simple mechanism, more a little bit form over substance, but form is important when you're dealing with mass general laws related to the funding of the student activity accounts. We just recommended a tweak, a tweak there so that you could do, just say be more in compliance with what we look at as mass general laws. And the other one relates to the GASB, which I'm sure is really interesting to you folks, but it is to us. And there's one big one coming down the road, it's called GASB 68. You have a, you're a part of Worcester County, the time system. Worcester County has a $546 million unfunded pension liability. You guys own about 2% of that. That's about $10, $11 million. That liability in fiscal 2015 is going to be sitting on your books on the financial statements, because they're saying that you're going to have to put it on there. Which is essentially going to blow a hole in pretty much every balance sheet that we have a client of. Because that never was there before. You just met your required payment every year, which is called the annual required contribution or ARC. As long as you made that, you had no liability. Now the, the GASB is following in the steps of the private sector that said, hey, that liability is out there, it can't be buried in the notes, it can't be up the books, you got to put it on the face of the financial statements. And that's the new thing that's coming out. So to wrap it up, a few hundred dollars worth of work. Your team did a great job. I was very pleased and happy that they treat people that treated so well and I wanted to answer any questions you might have, if you do have any.
That whole GASB thing's got me a little bit freaked out.
It's become very interesting. When you hear the Wall Street Journal and all the major people talking about GASBs, and nobody knew what it was five years ago, it's changing, it's changing.
So what are, what are people, what are schools, what are districts doing? How are, how's the private sector handling it?
Well, we have to say municipal sector. The private sector doesn't have defined pension plans anymore. They threw them away. That's when 401ks came up.
Well, well, having been in that industry, they do have some.
10% of, 10% of industry maybe has them. And of that 10%, a significant percentage of that tends to be closely held companies.
Right.
So they're benefiting, like a family type thing. But when you look at, perfect example is NYNEX. When, you know, they had the defined pension plan, where a lot of guys retired in their 40s and 50s. They threw that out, introduced the 401K. The next thing they did, NYNEX said is that we're not going to even contribute any more to the 401K. You contribute yourself, but we're not going to match. That's the evolution of what we saw from defined benefit plans to the plans that we see today. Because the 401K, there's no required contribution on behalf of the employer, and as a result, the liability doesn't have to be shown on the balance sheet.
But my question is really around this deficit, it's going to look like a deficit for us by 2015.
You'll be in the same boat as everybody else.
Yeah, but that, I don't care about them. I care about us. So my question is, if the municipalities are already dealing with this, and the school districts are following them, how are they handling that? What's the backlash?
I would say some of our clients are putting their head in the sand right now. A lot of them, because a lot of municipalities are not dealing with this. Personally, we audit about 70, 72, 73 municipalities. I think I have six that have really started to address this.
And what are they doing to address it?
They have the funds available to get close to getting to the point of funding. Towns like Brookline, Wellesley, PBD, Arlington, those are, I'm not going to say well-heeled towns, but they've been, they have the ability, because of the demographics of their tax base.
Right.
To do things that some communities can't.
And they have some business where we certainly are at a deficit there.
Right. That's what I mean by the, you know, when you have the ability to say 65% of your tax levy is commercial and versus like my town, Tuck spray, it's like 82% residential, those are the differences where people are able to act on it versus not.
All right.
And will that be a trust?
It's a would be. You can do it two ways. You can fund it internally, and there's a different way to approach it with that, but you can set it aside. Or you can, there's some law that was put out by the state that allows you just adopt that MGL. I'm sorry, I can't remember what it is off the top of my head. And then you have effectively established an OPEB trust. It's a big nut.
And that's 2015 by law?
No, not, it's not by law, it's by the reporting standards associated with your financial statements. If you, for instance, did not put the, this, this on your financial statements when GASB 68 is supposed to be applied, you would get what we would call adverse opinion for a portion of your financial statements, which is not good.
Any question? How does we acquire this?
I don't mind answering, is it okay though?
Yeah.
Okay. You don't acquire, it's, it's, well, you do. You have, you have a benefit plan that says we're going to pay for a portion of our retirees' health benefits. I don't know what the split is off the top of my head, but you're going to pay for it. And that liability is right now done on what they call a pay as you go basis. So as the retirees' benefits come out, the school puts in some appropriation, the employee matches it, and everything's fine. This, this, the new, the new GASB 45 is the old one. And the pensions are saying, well, you should be paying a lot more than that. I mean, in other words, there's a liability out there that's going down the road, that you have to establish a funding schedule to meet the full obligation of that at some point in time, usually 30 years out. So what they're saying is, is for what you're not having paid in enough today, you have to recognize a liability for that on the balance sheet. And that's pretty consistent with all private sector and, let's say, municipal, school and/or SEC companies, they all follow the same rules. Different, different tweets in terms of who oversees what, but that's the idea behind it.
So you can say pay as you go, so.
That's what we do now.
Today, we're paying for the people that retire.
Right. What their current cost is. But we should be paying for the current cost as well as the future cost of those retirees as well as people who have retired.
And who establishes the rates and?
Actuaries.
And who is an actuary?
What is an actuary?
Yes.
I don't know how to answer that.
It's a life insurance financial person.
They have to say future costs.
Yeah.
So it's a fortune dollar?
No.
No.
Same people that do insurance, like for instance, if you, you're a person of certain age, you smoke, drink, or don't smoke and drink, and you can get a life insurance policy of X amount for $100,000, whereas the person who smokes and drinks is going to have an actuarial age that's shorter, and you're going to pay more for that same policy. Those, that's an inkling of what an actuary does.
Another question is, has the school committee or the district, the teachers association, have they looked at 401ks?
I think this might be a discussion for another, another time.
I'm just curious, I mean, because they said-
We're obligated by state law. We're obligated by state law for our employees to participate in the pension system.
It's a state law?
State law.
Retirement system.
Retirement system. We have no choice.
When was this law being imposed?
What's that?
When was this law being imposed?
Well before my time, it was a long time ago.
Well, I'm not, I just wanted to get an understanding.
I don't know. The contributory was back in 1939, I think, or 19 something like that. People before 39 or 49 were non-contributory. But contributory pensions were in the 30s or 40s.
Maybe we'll pick it up.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah. You're still going.
Our next presentation, Andrew Zircey is here from the high school. And he's going to present on core values. So you may recall that we have our NIES working at the high school to finish the self-study. And we're going for a June draft. And then we will have a, probably a full presentation of that in the fall. So we thought it would be good for the school committee to start seeing it piece by piece in terms of what they're collecting evidence towards. So this is the first standard.
Yes. Core values is the first standard, as Mr. Wood limited to. I think, other than the general overview that Mr. Sacalarian provided a little while back, I think this is the first report out. Keep in mind that what I'm providing tonight is the pieces that we've come up with for the self-study of the core values part thus far. There's a little bit of opinion toward the end, but for the most part, this is all fact-based. So let me just dive in here. So the first indicator of the core values, NIES self-study, the school community engages in a dynamic, collaborative, and inclusive process informed by current research-based best practices to identify and commit to its core values and beliefs about learning. As I mentioned a little while ago, Leo Sacalarian, who's heading the NIES steering committee and is sort of overseeing all things NIES at the high school, he presented a while back and mentioned that it took about 16 months or so from start to finish to create our mission statement and core values. The timeline of which can be found on, I believe, the high school website under core values, or under NIES. I provided a link. And I can also provide, I can share this with you, Lita, and it can be reported out to everybody if need be, if people are interested in that. So you can see the links for yourself. And again, these are the core values that we developed. I'm not going to read through because they're on the website for the high school, they're all over the high school. And then following that, we've got the 21st century learning expectations. So these are what we developed, started around 2012 and moving forward. So through Endicott surveys, as part of this process, Endicott College has created a bunch of surveys that are used by all the schools regarding the NIES self-study process. For indicator one, 80% roughly of students and almost 90% of parents are familiar with the core values and beliefs in the show regional high schools. So we've done a good job of making things aware to everybody. And nearly 88% of parents believe that the core values and beliefs represent what the community values about student learning. So these are positive things to report. Moving on to indicator two, which is about challenging and measurable 21st century learning expectations as defined through school-wide rubrics, which is something that we, as you'll note here, we started creating them last school year, and this year we've rolled them out. They've been used by most departments on at least some assessments. And what we're seeing mostly is the school-wide rubrics were, and the learning expectations were put out with the beginning of the year learning expectations that students would bring home to parents around how to behave in class and what the teachers are expecting of students. So you sort of saw it on those things, and then also, one of the goals that we had for this year was to have some assessments use the school-wide rubrics to have students be assessed, sorry. So this is more proof of indicator two. 60% roughly students believe the 21st century learning expectations are challenging, and a little bit more than that, the 64% of staff concur with that statement. 85% of parents know and understand the level of learning that their children must demonstrate to meet the school's learning expectations. So again, these are from Endicott surveys. I didn't get a number, but parents in general believe the school-wide rubrics are challenging. Also though, the awareness and use of the school-wide rubrics are still a work in progress. Again, noting that we've only had them in place since the start of this school year. So while 78% of staff members know the school has adopted these rubrics, roughly 19% are still undecided as to effectiveness. 59% of students report being familiar with the rubrics. 24% roughly undecided on being familiar. So again, it comes down to awareness. And also, and I apologize in advance, but sometimes when students are given surveys, they're not necessarily paying attention to what they're doing. That, some of that margin of error has to be accounted for, but I think these are fairly accurate numbers. And again, I provided some links to what the school-wide rubrics look like for each of the different values. And again, I can share a lot of this. Indicator three has to do with, are these school-wide rubrics, are these expectations part of the culture of the school? And again, keep in mind that we've only had these since the start of the school year, so it is a bit of a work in progress. Based on what we've seen though, in some ways, students do understand, they're 83% familiar with the core values and learning expectations. Surprisingly, staff are somewhat less clear than the students are. I'm not sure how that worked out. 78% of staff believe that the core values are actively reflected in the school's culture. And I, I can understand why they would respond in this way, because you have some staff, you know, like paraprofessionals, part-time staff members who may be taking the survey and don't necessarily see the rubrics out there as much as regular, you know, general education, day-to-day staff members would see. So just noting that perhaps. So here's some caveats. So while these core values are reflected in terms of video announcements, on walls like sightseeing, and also in discipline referrals where students are reprimanded for various things, they're absent currently from curriculum guides. Communicating through the use of school-wide rubrics is also a little bit inconsistent. As I noted, we're still in the process of putting them in more assessments, making them part of assessments in some ways. So still some work to be done here, I think, and it's something that for now during the self-study, we would have to make note of that. Other caveats, only 63% of staff believe the core values are influencing policies, procedures, and allocation of resources. But 25% of staff are undecided. So that's, again, it comes back to how closely are some staff paying attention to this? Sort of makes you wonder. 74, excuse me, 74% of staff reference the core values while making important teaching decisions, 16% undecided. Again, I think, again, it's- Again, I think, again, it's, they're still new, they're still fresh, some of that has to play a role in some of these numbers. Indicator four is where there's the most wiggle room, and I'll explain what I mean by that. The school regularly reviews and revises the core values based on research, data sources, and also district and school community priorities. Right now, there is no formal process in place for the regular review of core values and also learning expectations. And if you think about it, that would make sense because they're new. We wouldn't have a process for review if we would just put them in place. And while we have, and when I say me, we, I mean the leadership council, steering committee, while there has been some discussion about what a review process would look like, there isn't anything that they've agreed upon as of yet. So these are some opinions on my part, not necessarily anything fact-based. What we've seen, core value indicator four, this is where the greatest area for growth is for us. This is a deficiency though, and we would have to honestly report that when we go around to writing the self-study, which we are well in the process of doing. Collecting ideas and turning those ideas into something appropriate would be wonderful, but we haven't quite gotten there yet. We need to move from formative stages to actual development and creation. That's just, again, an opinion, it's not something that, I'm basing this on any kind of fact, it's just something that I'm seeing and observing and reporting on. When we started the self-study process, we looked at other schools, we looked at model reports, and it's possible that maybe we would take a similar approach in terms of creating a review process for these core values. But again, this is just an opinion that I'm forming, this is not something that we've formally discussed, this is just, perhaps we could look at this as a potential solution to this issue. Okay. So, any questions? Yes?
So does NEAS find it negative that you find a deficiency, or, because I think deficiencies are important to find, that's the whole point of it. So if you find a deficiency, give them a couple of possible solutions until you're working towards it, that's not a negative thing, is it?
I'm not overly experienced in the NEASC process, I'm not going to lie. This is the first round of NEASC that I've gone through, so I can't really speak to that necessarily. I can say that it's more important to report honestly and say this is a work in progress than it is to sort of cover up the fact that we don't have this in place quite yet. And it's like you said, yes, it's a deficiency in that we don't have it yet, but again, if we're honest about what we're doing, that's the most important thing.
It doesn't come out as a negative, though. Oftentimes, what NEAS will do is they'll work to verify that in fact, they, you know, their process is evolving, and that's what they'll write about, and they'll be looking for ways that maybe even the self-study committee, the steering committee didn't realize that they in fact do evaluate it.
Yes.
And so they'll try to, you know, give that information up in their report.
One thing that I failed to mention in this presentation that I wasn't aware of until yesterday, I guess in March, we're doing a model NEASC visit, and I think maybe some of what I'm talking about now will change as a result of what we discover through the model visit. People will come in, will practice the whole thing, and will get a better sense of maybe what we can do to improve this part of it, and also maybe other areas that I'm not even thinking of. Just something to keep in mind.
And just to back up, so this self-study is going to be one component of many that the NEASC organization is going to use to test accreditation or not.
There's also going to be evidence that's collected, for instance, under the core values component, some of the evidence that's been collected includes the actual physical rubrics, some of these physical learning expectations that teachers hand out to their classes at the start of the semester or the start of the school year. And also, perhaps there might be some model student work that we can show, like this clearly demonstrates integrity, communication, achievement, you know, the various components of those core values. So I would imagine there'll be some student work that'll be evidence also. There's other things as well, but I, again, just reporting on what I know for sure.
Any other questions?
One of my suggestions would be is to make sure people know and understand the school improvement plan process, because that's, I think, one of the ways that not only, you know, annually does the school look at growth, and they use their own mission statement, and prior to this mission statement, there was a mission statement, so, and there's a prior self-study for the school to look at it as well, and a prior self-study to look at as well, so there are other pieces of information that will come into the room when the NEASC committee visits that will, you know, show growth, because they'll have that as a basis, and they'll see all the other things that have been going on.
Has there been any big surprises?
I don't know that there's been any big surprises, I'm not going to, I mean, I can't really speak to that. It's, again, it's a new process for me. I came from DYS over to public schools about five, six years ago, so this is all, it's just eye-opening for me in terms of the amount of work, the amount of detail that goes into taking a look at everything and, you know, fine-tooth comb, whatever you want to call it. It's, that's really been, I guess, the surprise for me, is how closely we have to look at things, and the amount of collaboration, the amount of time that's necessary to make it, make it right.
According to the conclusion, that it's worthwhile?
Yes. Yeah, I've learned quite a bit, and not just about core values, but also the other areas. I think it's definitely a worthwhile process. I know that there's some school districts where the staff have sort of protested, I guess, I don't know if that's even the right word, they're not participating in the process, and I don't know that that's the right way to go about things. I think it's important to take a hard look at what works, what doesn't, and, you know, improve and make the next decade the best it can be. Maybe that's just me being an optimist, I don't know, but.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
A pleasure. And then just to wrap up on my report, I'm going to go right down to, starting with number eight, in terms of aspects that won't be covered later in this meeting. Several organizations, of which I'm a part of, are working to push through a joint resolution by the House and by the Senate, so that we will have some indication of Chapter 70 and other aspects of the budget, but definitely Chapter 70 sometime, hopefully in, probably the earliest will be actually mid-April. But, so in the coming weeks, maybe as early as our next meeting, I might have language for you to adopt as a resolution that we could then send out to our area representatives so that we encourage them to see the value in having a joint resolution. I think that would be an important step for the body to take, because it's, you know, the more information we have going into the budget at town meetings, the better off we're going to be. So that's something that we're working on quite a bit. And something, just something that I think has been in the news of late, and to show that they are reaching out, Department of Children's and Families, DCF, has been reaching out to lots of organizations, but especially schools in recent weeks, and they met with the Worcester County Superintendent's last week, and we had a very nice meeting with the area director, and talked about how we can continue our partnership. We are fortunate here that, for when we have to be in touch with DCF, we work very closely with the Worcester office. Part of some of the concerns that we raise are not with our local office, but oftentimes, because of resources, other offices around the state have to place students within our jurisdiction, and that becomes a problem because they don't have that relationship with us, and the structure of DCF is such that it doesn't come through the Worcester office, it stays with their sending home office. And so that's somewhat problematic, and we discussed that, I think that's something that they're going to listen to, I don't know exactly how they're going to address it because it's part of their infrastructure, but it's certainly something that we would like to see some resolution to in the coming weeks and months, because we do, we do work with several offices out of Lowell and Springfield as well, and it's complex, and it takes a lot of our staff time in terms of how we respond to their needs, so.
So can you, I want to make sure I understand, so the, your hope is?
Our hope is that our area director out of Worcester can be more of a, an intermediary to help address concerns or questions that come up with other offices in other locations, because as of yet, we haven't used that as a resource.
Okay.
And so she was very open to the idea that, you know, yes, absolutely, come to us, we'll do what we can, it's not, it's not our current procedure, but we'll-
Rather than using staff?
Yes.
Thanks.
Or maybe to minimize, we still have to use our staff, but to minimize the amount of time our staff has to work on the case. So.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Subcommittee reports, our student representative from the high school, she did.
Good evening, everyone. I will start with the athletics report. The wrestling team ended the regular season with a record of 18-3-1. The team also cinched the Mid-Watch City League title for the second year in a row. The team will compete in sectionals this weekend. The girls' basketball team is still on the streak, going 17-0 on the season. The team travels to Hudson tonight and hosts Tinsborough on Friday night for senior night. The boys' basketball team has improved 11-7 and has been invited to play in the 75th Annual Clark Basketball Tournament for the first time since 2004. Our boys' ice hockey team is 5-7-3 and playing well. They are playing in their final five games over the next week as they are still chasing a playoff spot. Our girls' ice hockey co-op team has improved 8-4-2 and is one win away from cinching playoff rank. Swimming has finished their regular season, and we currently have one diver, Haley Doyle, competing in the state meet this weekend. Haley placed fifth in the sectional meet last week. The indoor track teams continue to do well. The girls' team won the league championship and is placed third in the league. Our Alpine and cross-country ski teams are finishing their seasons this week. The cross-country team competed in the state meet today. Neshoba Decca attended the district five competition on Thursday, January 30. Members competed against schools like Chelmsford, Villarica, Westford Academy, Drake at Tewksbury Lowell, Greater Lowell, and Neshoba Tech. Of the 110 Neshoba Decca members, 80 advanced to state championships. To raise money for a needs, an organization whose mission is to provide independence to people who are deaf or have a disability through the use of canine assistance, students and faculty were given the opportunity to play and take pictures with a seven-month-old puppy today during lunch. It's really cute. The, it is officially Random Acts of Kindness Week at Neshoba. It's always nice to see people going out of their way to do nice things, and we're trying to top last year's 2,600 Random Acts of Kindness throughout the week. And also, tomorrow is the regional student advisory council meeting. It got pushed back a week due to the weather, so.
Any questions? Thank you. Finance Subcommittee?
There's nothing else to report, we approved the remarks, and we discussed the town meeting that was held, that you had gone to.
Personnel Subcommittee, we have met with the representatives of the teachers' union, first round of negotiations. Not much else I can really share about that, but we're underway. Policy Committee, there's no report because we did not meet this past week. I don't think Ellen had any news, did she, from the ESBC?
We had, we had one meeting, but nothing changed.
Okay. And then the Neshoba Regional High School Space Study Task Force?
Haven't met.
We haven't met since the last time. Okay. That moves us along to new business, which I think a lot of people here are waiting for. Sorry it took so long, thank you for your patience. First item on this part of the agenda is the all-day kindergarten proposal. Michael, would you like to?
Sure, so just to repeat what's in the proposed budget, is that we would change our model so that all of our classrooms would become all-day classrooms, and for all of the students who have gone into the lottery, and for the students, so all of those students would be then allowed into all-day K, and our students who are in half-day K would attend until 11:35, so they would continue to have the same experience that they've had to allow that choice for those parents who want that. So it's really, I think, a nice opportunity for the district to begin, then to transition beginning with FY16, to what I hope is essentially a three-year phase-in, phasing out tuition costs for all-day K and making it a free all-day kindergarten for all, and the plan would be in FY18 to have our first class to be full-day K for everybody.
And just to reiterate and be clear, so what we would be voting on tonight is a proposal that makes it so that all of the classes have the ability to be full-day instead of some being half-day.
Correct.
And can you talk a little bit about, I know there's a waitlist for-
Sure. So why this is a significant budget impact is that in order to accommodate all of the students in all-day K, we did have to add staff in each of the towns to be able to do that, both professional educators and par educators. So what, and this is something we did last year with the preschool piece that we added, the classroom that we added there, and so, we would, what I'm asking you to consider tonight is to make this addition regardless of the outcome of the annual town meeting, essentially, so that parents can begin to plan now, because many of them have other options that they're exploring for their children, and it would be a shame to woo Zier and Neshoba and then come back as a first grader. So voting tonight would cement that plan to implement this piece of next year's budget plan, policy plan, and if there was an outcome not favoring our budget in May, we would look at other aspects of our budget to meet that expectation.
And can you tell us a little bit more about the implications to the cost?
So it's approximately $255,000 for the, for the professional educators, and about $85,000 for the, I'm sorry, $255,000 for the implementation of the all-day kindergarten program.
Incremental cost?
No, that's the one-time cost in this budget.
Okay, so what we, have we calculated an incremental cost to make this particular change?
Over the three years?
Or, over what would, no, over what would have been if we stayed with the original plan coming, before this proposed change?
Right.
Right, that's what I-
So it's $255,000 for kindergarten.
In addition to what it would have been-
Exactly. Correct. So if you decide not to do all-day K, we would be able to reduce the budget by approximately $255,000.
That, that doesn't seem possible because all of these full-day students would be paying tuition.
Right, this is just the cost. The revenue, we'd be adding approximately 13, 18.
It ends up as 165 is the incremental cost of the new program.
I just think we should say that out loud, because everybody else-
And it doesn't mean that even if we don't say yes now, it doesn't mean we can't say yes for the vote of this later, right?
Correct. Correct, you can do it in, right, preview to the March eleventh vote.
To help people plan.
Correct, and that is the time difference. You'd make this vote March eleventh if you.
So if our budget is not approved as we present it, a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars in order to fund this program will need to come out somewhere.
Of somewhere else, of our existing budget of current programs.
Well, of proposed.
Proposed.
Current or proposed, because if we don't get the budget, we can't even do the proposed programs possibly.
And is this including, does this have an impact on transportation costs?
Not, not really, because unfortunately, the way the towns are geographically, we have to run two buses. Otherwise the runs get very long. We tried to run it one bus, for example, this year in Bolton and we had students on the bus for almost an hour. Didn't seem to make sense, so.
So there's no impact on transportation costs to this?
Not planned into this budget.
If we went to full all-day kindergarten, we'd be business, we'd still be offering some house.
Right, not until, not until we phase in fully all-day K.
And how about curriculum costs as far as other materials for, is that the same, because it's the same number of kids? Just they're for a different.
Correct, exactly. We have, we have one classroom essentially that we'll, we'll be setting up. It just happens to be in Stowe and that classroom was already outfitted as part of the school, so.
And how do we balance, make sure all our children who are in kindergarten get the same education, whether they're there till eleven-thirty-five or three o'clock?
So we do that now and, and looking at our student performance over the course of the longitudinally, we're not seeing any particular difference in performance academically. You know, what we've seen.
You're not selling full-day kindergarten, I'm saying that.
Bringing that part of its nap, part of its rest time, part of its general. Another test, I'm sure.
I, I would actually be selling, I think, the, the aspect of the parents who choose to stay with their children in the afternoons. They provide as rich an opportunity as what we're able to provide. So, you know, I just didn't get to finish.
So would the half-day people still switch halfway through the year?
We would probably not do that. We don't do it currently where we've had one session, they stay in the morning the whole session.
And have, I don't know if this is opening a whole another can of worms, but have we looked at the option of providing the kindergarten we have now, half-day kindergarten, with enrichment like aftercare like we have now? Because that's not technically going to be another kindergarten program because we can't do that because we have half the kids already there.
So.
I'd say cheaper option because I'm sure you'd be the same type of educators for that.
Well, we wouldn't necessarily, we, we had years ago, before all-day K became more the choice of parents, we used to run an extended day that began at twelve o'clock. And so the, the challenge now is that with the number of half-day classes, students that wanted it, we phased it out because nobody wanted it anymore. And so, you know, just didn't, it wasn't worth our planning for it when we only had two or three students that would sign up for it. So we, we have not looked at that. My sense is that over time, what we're going to find is that parents may phase in their kids into the all-day program.
And the extended day?
What's that?
And the extended day?
We, we don't offer an extended day, you know, the all-day program until three oh five.
We don't offer extended day in kindergarten.
After three oh five for the students who are in all-day, they can do.
Have we thought about the impact, or did you just ask this?
Yes.
I'm so sorry because I'm, I'm whirling here trying to process it all.
Just for clarification, if it's possible, can we talk about in the three, three towns, the numbers?
What's that?
Can we talk about the numbers in the three towns?
Sure.
Does, is there a waitlist to get into all-day kindergarten in Oaktree Town?
There is, it's.
And, and how many kids are on each week list?
So it's largest currently in Bolton with thirteen students, eight in Lancaster and just.
Or just looking at that.
It's thirteen, sixteen, and eight.
Historically, how many kids on the waitlist actually end up getting in?
A lot.
A lot, kind of getting into all-day kindergarten, you know, but just for whatever reason, people change them.
That's right, so depending on the given year, if we had, for example, as many that would create another class, we've taken the position to add the class as long as we had a half-day class available as a result. So this year it just made it that much more difficult because in some communities we were going to be left with seven kids per half-day program.
Can those half-day kids have the option to stay even though they signed up for half-day now? Would they have that option?
No.
Any, if they have a question?
You mean? If we went, if we went to this, every classroom was a full-day classroom, then wouldn't they have the option? I mean theoretically, couldn't they say, oh, well, in that case, I'll sign, I want to sign up and pay the fee?
Well, hey, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I thought you meant just because their choice that day.
If one of the reasons was they'd compen for it and chose not to, then they could opt for the full day.
Yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, I thought you meant like intermittently.
So they would opt for the full day still needing help?
Yes.
Right.
I'm concerned because of something you just said. You said you stopped the extended day because you were seeing a fluctuation of need this year and not need the next year. So if we vote this in and it's needed for next year and then it's not needed for the year after, I don't want, you know, I don't want, so what would happen?
So the only thing that would fluctuate in years going forward is we might have a different number of sections of all-day kindergarten, but they'll all be all-day.
Full-day kindergarten.
How many sections in each town?
So it'll work out that there'll be three in Lancaster, three in Stowe, and, uh, three in Bolton and five in Stowe.
Five full-day classes.
Full-day classrooms, right.
And they're obviously, well, if we were to do this program, then they would be below the classroom minimum size.
Yes.
And if we didn't do this program, sixteen kids would be on a waitlist.
Sixteen kids would be on a waitlist, right.
And all of these kids will be paying tuition to be in the full-day program. And that still would cost the district a hundred-and-sixty-five, yeah, a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand.
And what does that translate to? I, I don't have the numbers in front of me. With our budget, I mean, I would want to know.
We'd have to pick, right?
Right, we would have to make some choices, right?
Right.
And that's if, if that's if the current budget is voted, wait a minute, no.
Right, the budget is proposed, correct.
But even considering if they don't accept that budget, right?
Exactly, so if we go and it turns.
And that's assuming that all the waitlist people stay in it because we know right now that a lot of times, a lot of the waitlisters get in because people use the lottery as a, just in case as well and make their own decisions, which they perfectly have the right to do. So it could be actually more than a hundred-and-sixty-five if less sign up. Because we have less tuition.
Right.
Okay.
So one-sixty-five is the least.
Minimum.
Any other comments around the table before we open it up?
Actually, I do have a few concerns or, um, we're, you, well. The stated philosophy has been that every kindergarten gets the same curriculum regardless of whether they're attending a full-day or half-day. Right, and we're really sticking to that. But if you, if, if we're going to deliver the same curriculum to all the children in the classroom where some children will be there all day and some will only be there in the morning, then doesn't that mean that all the curriculum basically has to be delivered in the morning? And what do you do with the afternoon? Because then it becomes whatever. And the other thing is that educationally, the advantage of the full-day kindergarten is supposed to be that with that curriculum, they have more time to spend on that. But if you have to do it all in the half, one half of the day, you're losing that advantage of being able to spend more time and reinforce it. And, you know, I know the teachers, the teachers I know, have known who teach all-day kindergarten. That's one of the things they really like is not having to rush through everything, but it seems like we're just.
Why would it all have to be delivered in the morning?
Because if, because maybe at lunchtime, you can't be giving them new, you can't be presenting new material in the afternoon when some students will not be there.
That's right, the half-day kids would be in the same room.
Yes, that's, that's the whole, that's one, that's the thing.
Even if they're not in the same room.
Is that each class.
They can choose what classroom kindergarten is learning what. I mean.
So every, every class will be run full-day.
Right.
And presumably like seventy-five percent, eighty percent of that class will be staying the full day. But you're going to have some students in each of those sections who's leaving at lunchtime. So you're, you're basically.
So he doesn't have his choice, which students' choice.
And, and I guess, I guess my other thing where I know that, I guess I'm not articulating this very well judging from the puzzle books.
Oh, gee, what is it?
If, if we're going to give all the kids the same curriculum, it's got to be delivered in the morning. So then what are we doing with the afternoon? It's becoming.
Is it now time and playtime?
It, it's becoming, you, you're, you, you lose that pretense of calling it education and it just becomes.
Pre.
Well, it's, it, you can't, it, it becomes daycare because you can't, if, if we're going to stick by this philosophy that we're letting people choose and.
It can't possibly be the case that they would waste the afternoon.
No, I'm sure they'll have enriching activities, as Michael said, I'm sure that the, the kids, it's proven now that the kids who are home are having equally enriching activities with their parents or whoever, but we can't, you know.
Or they would have more time to do the morning curriculum and that would just be the trade-off that the, I mean, it may, it may not be a different curriculum, but it would be more of it, I assume, but I mean, Michael, do you want to talk to us?
So the, the, the way the day gets scheduled is that the, the things like, and keep in mind, it will only be in, in all of the classrooms, the, the maximum number of half-day students, I believe it will work out to be is, is five. So what will happen is the, the schedule of the day now is that the majority of the curriculum is delivered in the morning for both types of classes anyway, just because of the energy level of students that are five years old. What will happen differently is that the, the response to intervention, the remediation, and the enrichment in small groups will be scheduled for the half-day students in the morning, whereas those kinds of exercises are in the afternoon for all-day students. And so that's how they're going to mirror the, the same curriculum for both groups, which is essentially the way it's done now for half-day K.
I thought half-day K had a, one teacher and she would teach the session in the morning and the session in the afternoon.
That's correct.
And the full-day teachers now, because the half-day students are in them, get the longer duration to teach the material. But when we combine them, that has to switch, I thought, that's what I thought I heard you.
No, so, so they try to get the morning curriculum is mostly literacy and math.
Okay.
Okay, and that's true, so that's whether you're half-day or full-day. And the all-day students, the classes plan the enrichment and the remediation and the additional remediation in the afternoon. In the, in the half-day classes, the teacher has to arrange that that happens during the morning. So that will just continue, so it'll mirror what's happening now.
Okay.
Yeah, and like if the teacher does, I don't know if anybody knows this, but I'm a former kindergarten teacher, so.
Really?
You didn't know that? I taught kindergarten for nine years.
Is that why you guys sit him next to me?
You know, I would do one-on-one reading with kids. If kids were leaving at noon, I would just do them in the morning. The kids who were in the afternoon, I would do the afternoon, so, you know, and the other kids would be doing sort of stationary.
But the kids that were, but the kids that were only half-day were getting the advantage of being in the presence of an educator a full day.
Well, they were only there for half-day though.
No, no.
I'm sure would.
Oh, God.
Followed.
Don't make me think I'm confused.
What?
I just think that if we're going to do full-day kindergarten, we do full-day kindergarten and realize that's opening up a really negative knot. We don't want to discuss.
You mean to take away the half-day?
Yes.
Well, it's transitioning to that over a period of years.
Right, that's what we're moving to.
We just want to, like, shock.
I know, I, please, I, I get it.
So can you just review?
Sure.
For, for the benefit of the group? The difference between what we currently have and what we are proposing to do?
Currently have in terms of numbers of teachers?
Yeah, what, how it works, so the half-day kids, are they all in one class now?
So currently, we have all-day classes and then we have half-day classes taught by two separate teachers. Next year, what we would have is we would have three teachers in, in Bolton. All three teachers will teach all-day and they will have a class for all-day. A small portion of those students, so there are seven students in Bolton, so they'll be divided amongst the three classes. So the most will be there, it'll be two, two and two and three and one, and those students will leave at eleven-thirty-five. Their curriculum will be the same as everybody else's in the morning, but as Jeff said, and I've said, when it comes to the remediation and, and/or enrichment and the center times for those students, it'll be scheduled within the block of those three hours. Very typical, lots of centers do it that way, public and private. It's not uncommon at all, it's not different at all. When we first proposed all-the-k, all-day K, we thought about doing it that way. So it's, it's not a foreign concept to our kindergarten staff.
And so why is it costing so much more?
Because in this particular year, we have, we have some bounces in our enrollment. So we have a bounce in, in Stowe and a small bounce in Lancaster. So that's going to be part of that.
Paying for that.
How many current, how many kindergarten classrooms are currently having these now, right now?
So we have two and a half in Bolton, two and a half in Lancaster, and three full-day and one double-session half-day.
So two half-days in Stowe with three full-days in Stowe.
Four teachers.
So, so that's four teachers, so they have four to five teachers. I still don't understand why the cost differential is so high if, if the students are paying or the families are paying for the full day.
Because it doesn't cover the cost.
It doesn't.
The tuition doesn't cover the cost of.
It's not covering the morning session.
And if you've got like two and a half sections, because you've got two full days and one half-day, you're only paying that teacher and parent professional for the half of the day. So they, their salary would basically double. And if you're adding a whole new teacher, because you have one teacher teaching two sections, then that's one whole teacher's salary and one whole parent professional.
Question?
Okay.
How many students are going to be in kindergarten, full-time kindergarten, how many across all districts?
Well, so everybody will be in the all-day, so it'll be roughly a hundred, a hundred and sixty. So two-hundred-and-twenty minus fifteen, eight, so roughly a hundred and ninety-five.
Ninety-five, so the tuition goes up by a thousand, oh, eight-hundred dollars per student?
It's more than that, Michael, it's ninety-nine plus seventy-three plus fifty-nine.
Is that fifteen?
So sixty, sixty, I did sixty, so I missed a group of thirteen, so, so a hundred and eight. Two-hundred and eight. eight, two-hundred and eight.
Two-hundred and eight.
So the tuition goes up by eight-hundred dollars for each individual student that's enrolled in full-time?
I don't understand the question.
I'm not sure what you're doing.
If all the people on the waiting list get full-day kindergarten, the revenue would go up by about a hundred thousand dollars.
I understand that, but overall, all-day kindergartens that go on, there is a tuition and everybody's paying it.
Right.
So if you raise the tuition by five-hundred dollars, how much is that made of difference? Because right now we're finding all the numbers. So I'm just saying, if you raise the tuition by two-hundred, it drops to a hundred dollars.
The state law requires the tuition be set at the cost of the service, we could not raise the tuition just for that purpose.
So then you, then, I mean, what purpose? I mean, you're going to pay for the program, right, for the other half?
Right, but it, it does pay for the program already now.
So when the other students enroll, if we pay off the difference, we'd have to, your costs go up, so therefore if the costs go up, then you have to match it, so then you're in your rights to raise the tuition.
Our costs go up incrementally, but, I don't really understand what you're saying, but-
What I'm saying is that we're paying four-thousand dollars for kindergarten.
No matter whether we educate two-hundred kids or two-thousand kids, the cost per pupils about the thirty-one-hundred dollars we're saving, we're charging.
Right.
So, why are we short on money? If we're covering the cost?
We're not short on money, this is an issue of-
So you're looking at the cost of the, just the teachers, there's facility costs, there's district costs.
Well, the business is already paid, so.
This is an issue of cost, this is an issue of really making a decision tonight, whether or not you want to vote early and make this your top priority essentially, out of the budget that has been proposed. That's, that's essentially what you're, what I'm asking you to do.
But the reason that the cost has come up is because we're trying to figure out, so what happened, what is the cost implication if we have to figure out a way to make up this money?
Where's it going to come from?
And it's been determined that it, we would have to find a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand something. At least, at least.
Right.
Um, and so I think that the money does become an issue for tonight. I mean, I, I personally am going to go out on a limb and say, I, you know, I think that anybody who wants to have their student in kindergarten all day should be allowed to do it. We're a public school and we should figure out a way to make this happen. That's my personal opinion, um, you know, I feel strongly about it, um, but that's, you know, me. So I guess what we need to do is have a discussion, um, and we can allow people in the room to chime in, um, but eventually tonight, we need to decide if we're going to vote tonight and then we need to vote. Yeah.
I mean, I share your view and I'm prepared to make a detailed case based on my experience that it's a valuable year and, uh, that we ought to be providing it, and so I'm wondering if that's how you feel, that's how I feel, why don't we find out what the sense of the committee is and see if we need to go through a big process? We do?
I, I would like to hear more discussion.
Go sit in the corner.
No, I, I, we have to be fair.
I never used that.
Take a break.
We definitely need to get to a point where we have full-day kindergarten. My concern is voting on it when we don't necessarily have the money yet, and I'm going to, this is not going to be a popular statement, but there's thirty-seven kids on a waitlist and we're basing our whole budget on thirty-seven kids. How many kids are in this district?
And we're just inconveniencing those families.
I'm not saying, I mean, next week, if we have the money, I am all for it.
Right.
But I just don't feel like it's fiscally responsible to cut one thing that we don't know what we're going to have to cut if we don't get this money or even less money.
And it's only in the face of not inconveniencing some families. I don't want to inconvenience families just like anyone else, but I want to be fiscally responsible, like Julie said.
Well, I guess my response to that would be, I think it should be a high priority for any district that cares about, you know, quality education to provide full-day kindergarten. So, why wouldn't we just say that we're going to do it now instead of say we're going to do it later?
Because if we, I think we all agree, I mean, I can't believe any one of us doesn't think that this is the right thing to do. Full-day kindergarten, all right, that's not fair, but, but full-day kindergarten is, is it, is my opinion is the right thing to do. However, there are other very vocal groups of families who, who have other concerns, be it in the high school or be it in other programs, that they have made very clear they want to see, and not just the ones that are obvious that we know of, but there are other programs, and to say, we're going to make this decision right now because it's the right thing to do, but because we want to make sure that, and I've been there, that parents can make their personal decision at the detriment potentially of other programs, I don't know if that's fair. I'm not saying I wouldn't vote yes or I would vote no, I'm just saying I don't know if that's fair. Yes, I think full-day kindergarten is, it's more than a right, it's, 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 it's really important and I get that, but I, I could be swayed, but I'm not sure that making that decision tonight should have to happen. And I'm sure that's not popular.
It's popular with me.
All right, should we, um, open up for discussion? Is that what we want to do?
I want to hear from people that have said anything.
Lynn, do you have anything to add? Please.
Well, it never comes out right, um, basically-
What'd she say?
Never comes out. When I explain, you're doing a great job, by the way, but, um, kindergarten is not mandatory, correct?
Correct.
I mean, kindergarten, love kindergarten, absolutely love it, but it's not mandatory. People don't have to send their kid to kindergarten.
Okay, okay, since you're directly on me, good. It's like this, it's not mandatory, but it pre---
You know what, excuse me, she's, Lynn has the floor, okay? Great, thanks.
Well, she's directly on me, so I just wanted to ask-
Well, and like I said, I do, I love kindergarten, I think kindergarten's great, but, um, and I helped with the half-day, just personally, um, and we did something else for the other half of the day and it worked out great. The, you know, I've, I've listened to like, I've been here years ago, you know, Cathy everybody, and it's gone through, had this conversation every single year, and unfortunately, it all comes down to, you know, it comes down to money, but most, you know, half the day, they, they learn, they do great, and then the rest of it is because they can't do additional work because if they're half-day, it's napping, um, lunch, recess, and I'm not sure what the other things that they do, enrichment, whatever. So it, it doesn't, you know, I hate to take away the half-day choice for parents because parents, you know, the, the half-day is great for some kids, it's not, the full-day isn't great for all kids. I, I love the half-day. Full-day, it feels like daycare, and we're not in daycare business.
But I think we're making assumptions, or I think you're making assumptions about what the second half of kindergarten is like or would be like, and I don't think those are fair assumptions.
I think it's actually written that you cannot teach more than was taught for a half-day.
Okay, those-
There's no way that's possible, I'm sorry. Like, are you saying the teachers would not read to the kids, would not spend time doing one-on-one work with them, would not, I, I just don't think that's the case.
That's right, they only introduce new concepts, but they spend the time redoing what they did in the morning, providing enrichment, and all of that would still happen for the kids who are half-day, it would just happen during the time of the day.
The kids would have more time to do letterwork, they would have more time to work on social skills, I mean, there's, it's, if that time were wasted, that would be any competent teacher, which I do believe is what we have.
I, I, quite honestly, I don't think that they waste the time, I think that this model creates inequities that, that would not be there if we had full-day kindergarten for everybody, and in many ways, I think that that's the, the discussion we should really be having either this year or next year, is not, is not this pick and choose and fee-based and yada-yada.
But that's the plan, isn't it?
It, it is the plan eventually to get there.
It is the plan to get there.
But, so for this year, we have to still deal with this half-day and full-day scenario because we can't get rid of it at once.
Right, but why, we kind of are nose to spare face.
No, 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 no.
It's a step in the right direction.
Okay, you've, you've made up your mind and I know I'm not going to be able to articulate my frustration with this model. The pro, okay, the problem is you've got five kids, let's do something, kids, but we've got to do, you, you have to do the, the value when they're all there, and it's not, and, don't, don't throw them, yeah, but someone's always going to be sick or their parents will pull them out to go on vacation, and that's a different argument than this, the plan is that some of them are there full-time, some of them are there the halftime, and they're all mixed together. It's not, it's not where you've got a full-day class where the expectation is that everybody will be there full-day, or you have a half-day class where the expectation is that these kids, they do their business in that half-day. It's this mixing it and saying that, that there's not going to be any shortcomings and that you, there aren't going to be social issues for the kids that are, these are five and six-year-olds and they're very, I have been through that age multiple times, they're still very self-centered, so, you know, if, if the, there, there's going, there's, I, I see the potential for social issues that would not be there if the classes were, you got the full-day kids and you got the half-day kids, but the kids that are only there part of the time don't get the same bonding time with their classmates that the kids that are there all day get with each other. I ha, I have a lot of problems with this particular model for, for addressing the problem, and I'm not against full-day kindergarten and I, I really do think that that's where we need to, to get is, is not this, this picking and choosing for the people who can afford to pay and are lucky enough to make the lottery, there are families that, you know, as much as we like to pretend that we're all affluent, we aren't all affluent, three thousand bucks is too much for some families.
I share your concerns, I don't think it's ideal, but what are you proposing? I mean, if I'm saying, let's vote for Michael's proposal and let's be sure and push it towards the stated goal of full-day kindergarten in two years, is it?
It'd be in three years.
For everyone, maybe try and accelerate that. What, I mean, are you saying, no, we shouldn't move ahead or we should only implement full-day for everyone for next year? I, I just don't understand what you're saying as opposed to voting for Michael's proposal.
Are you saying, what are you doing for the other kids that are in the half-day? And that you can't, because before it came tonight, this is, this was bothering me, this, what you're articulating was bothering me, because it's, it's a wonderful experience for the kids that are in the full-day program, for the kids that are in the half-day, and I agree with you, them leaving in the middle of the day or they're just not there to have the full experience, I'd almost prefer it if there was a separate half-day program and they were not mixed, because I think that socially, there are some issues there, so, but it doesn't sound like the numbers are there to support a full half-day program, is that correct?
Right.
And I think that's a detriment to those kids that are in the half-day program. I don't know, I'm not the solution, I can't give you the solution, I'm just giving you, I'm reinforcing what Maureen's saying, and my concern is, we can't, I don't like the model either, I, I, but I don't know what the alternative is because the numbers are so low in the half-day program.
Are they that low in the half-day? I'm looking.
Well, there's, there-
What if we combined, what if we took the half-dayers from all three towns?
We can't.
We can't, by regional agreement.
That's why I can't do the extra full-day in one spot.
Right. That, that is the ideal way to, to resolve that, absolutely, but there's transportation.
But, but from an edu, from an edu, and I respect that you are and have been, thank you very much for your service, sir, and I mean that sincerely, but from, and I wanted to ask you this, so I'm glad we finally got there, thank you for that, um, from your perspective as an educator, do you have concerns about that? I mean, I know that, you know, that's a loaded question because this is your proposal and this is your best proposal, and you've thought a lot about it and you've put a lot into it, but to have those kids mixed in that classroom, I mean, I don't know what the alternative is either, and yes, I am passionate about it, but I don't know what the alternative is either, but does it, I mean, is that optimal?
Is it op, no, the optimal would be to have all-day K for everybody.
For everybody.
For, I mean, that's the optimal, there's no doubt about that.
So what happens? I don't think anybody would disagree with that.
I don't think anybody does.
I mean, I can't imagine anybody disagreeing with that.
Right.
Right, I mean, what's the, and how many kids are in the half-day program to, I mean, where do we want eventually, what, how many kids are in the half-day program?
In Bolton, it's seven.
Okay, but then there's the waitlist, and I was confused on-
And Stowe is twenty-six.
So you have to add those two together.
So you're assuming that there would be one section of twenty for half-day?
Correct.
Unless people bail.
Say that again, in Bolton, there's seven half-day?
Bolton, there's seven, and Lancaster, there's twenty-five, and Stowe, there's twenty-six. But again, I do want to say, based on what I talked to, that Mary Rollinson, a lot of times, these numbers all move because people, people are like, oh, the lottery, I didn't get in the lottery even though they don't know what they want to do. So these numbers always move, I guess.
Right, I think, I think that's, that happens-
Both ways.
Both ways, and, and this year won't necessarily happen because it's all-day K, you know, the proposal is all-day, so, I don't know if we're going to be able to count on our past experiences in regard to that, but, but you're right.
But I, the thing that, the, the fluctuation in the Bolton waitlist number I thought was really interesting too, because they had the most data, and it literally went like this.
So, you know, for example, in FY thirteen, as you're looking at the, the data, we had twenty-one on our waiting list in Bolton, that's a year we added a full-day class. And then the following year, we didn't have that, so we didn't add a class.
Because you probably already had the extra class from the year before.
No, we, we eliminated it.
Oh, you eliminated one, hmm, interesting.
So, you know, we, we have bounced back and forth, you know, in, in that regard, because this is at the date of the lottery, so it was also a year that we had this, you know, people decided, once they got onto the waitlist, not to come.
Yeah. So right now on my catchings, so you have people enough for a classroom for a half-day planning?
More than enough.
More than enough.
Yep.
So there's definitely people who are still very much interested in half-day.
Yes.
Well, to Maureen's point, I think there's people who can't afford a full-day.
Right.
Right, that's right. And I think it's great that we're, you know, honoring sort of the history of what we've been trying to do in terms of offering choice. The decision to offer both has been long-rooted in the value of offering choice to parents, so, you know, the, the time will come when, when the parents in this room will actually be the parents who want only half-day. It's not this year, but it will come when we finally make that transition, I guarantee you, you know, my colleagues have told me. So I, I fully expect that to happen, it's just, they still have that option, so they're going to be happy with, with that option. You know, to, to the social issues that you've raised, I, I can't speak to it personally, but, you know, I've been advised by early child coordinators that it's a very common practice and, and, you know, that it's not as, um, so, a, a, a social emotional issue for five and six-year-olds to have their goodbyes because they know they're coming back tomorrow. They, they learn when it is that Johnny's going to be there, and they accept that and they move on, you know, they're, they're in the moment, they're not longing for Johnny to be there, um, you know, because they know they're going to come back, and over time, that's what happens, and that's what they get used to.
Johnny will always be there, but-
Well, that may happen too, yeah. So, um, so I mean, I think that this is a very, you know, our early child coordinator, Cynthia Maxfield herself, in, has run programs like this, uh, you know, feels very confident that our staff is up to the task, they're already beginning their creativity around how to make it happen so that they can have that common experience for all kids, um, and they're not concerned about it.
Um, you've had your hand up for a while, let, let's hear.
Um, we just moved here and chose this, chose Massachusetts and chose Bolton in particular for the quality of education, and I was floored when I found out that it was only half-day kindergarten, I didn't, and I'm a certified teacher and I taught kindergarten in first grade, and I honestly didn't even know that public schools were still offering half-day kindergartens. And we all know that all across the country, schools are taught, public schools are talking about adding, um, public preschool. Kindergarten is like long gone, that, that issue is like over in the rest of the country and people are, because there's such an importance, every, all the studies show how important early education is, that it's the foundation for everything to come, and so this just seems, and, and I know that there's this issue of what the half-day kids get and what the full-day get, kids get, and at this point, we can call it a choice, I know there's a monetary thing attached and some parents can't afford it, and that's a whole nother issue, which is not right, I think, either, but it just seems like at this point, it's about equal access to education. this point, it's about equal access to education, and I know kindergarten is not required, but this is a public school, and the rest of the country provides it pretty much, and...
I'm sorry, do you have all those statistics? Because I moved from New Hampshire, and the kindergarten was a co-op, and as a community, we, we did the kindergarten, we did the bankroll, we did, we did everything. It's co-op kindergarten, it's by the community, not by the split.
Okay, no, I don't, I don't, I just feel like the, the overall sentiment in the country is that kids generally attend full-day kindergarten. It, it just seems to me that it's about equal access to education, that there are 16 families in Bolton who are, who do want it, who are being told, you can't have it, and we're even willing to pay for it, which is a whole, I know, for another time, but it just, it just, that's the question of why should this be a priority? And I think that's it, that even if, even if there were no money, it seems like this has gotta happen, and we gotta get there somehow. So that's why I think it should be a priority.
Yeah, you had your hand up before, sorry.
The whole integrated thing, that's exactly what you were saying, that's what I have the whole issue for, because there's gonna be a handful of kids to go home, and those kids are gonna be in pieces every day, because they're gonna feel punished that they have to get home, and little Johnny gets to stay, and that's my good friend, and why do I have to go home? So therefore, as a mom, I deal with a child who's upset every day, or enforced to pay. For me, it's not a money issue, it's more of a, I wanna be with my kids, and I think a full-day at that age is too long, and they come home exhausted, they come home with the other kids that I have, and I can't spend time with them. So it's, there's been a lot of addressing for the budget and the money, and all the kids who do want it, and the families, but though we are in minority who want the half-day, this is not a good option. I would rather you do all-day, or half-day, or just leave the half-days together as a group, so they feel normal, they feel like this is right, not being punished every day. Because every parent knows that the first kid to leave a playdate is in tears. So we're not thinking about the children here, we're thinking about parents and their schedules, and the money, and the budgets, and all that, and truly down to the kids.
I don't think there is a majority, because there's 51 kids signed up in two towns for half-day kindergarten by their choice.
I guess right here, but it's just gonna be-
No, but I'm just saying, I, right, that I, I think that isn't a, your voice is not a minority, that there's 51 kids signed up in two towns for half-day kindergarten, and for whatever reason, that's, that was their choice when given the option of what to put their name in.
Why can't you combine it across towns? If our half-day is so small, we're waiting, what, what is the reason that it's still open?
Currently, our regional agreement requires us to have, educate our K through eight students in their respective communities.
Because even if I was willing to drive them, I wouldn't be able to take them to Stowe?
There are, we do have provisions to offer what we call intra-district, our policy does allow intra-district for unique circumstances, you know, that, I don't think we have enough slots to be able to make that happen, to be able to offer to everybody, which is my general rule about trying to offer something, it's gonna be somehow offered to everybody. But, you know, this is an example where if our regional agreement were more flexible, we could create different classrooms and, and figure out a way to transport kids to make it happen.
So, that's a dumb deal, I mean, there isn't any exploring that could be done there that could say, well, if you wanna drive your kid for a half-day.
For a half, I mean-
Right, wasn't that the question?
Yeah, that's the nature of the question. I'd have to look into it a, a little bit more. I, I mean, I think that with full knowledge of the school committee, and I, where it's the regional agreement, I, I'd have to look into it, how, how you could vote essentially to take a blind eye to it, you know? Our policy isn't meant to be a blanket, allow everybody who wants to go to another community, it's, it's special circumstances, so I really wanna look into that a little bit more.
Yeah.
I mean-
I, I don't know what the answer is, I'm just asking, yeah.
So just as a statistic, and I found this on the internet, so I don't know if this is accurate, but the statistic is that 32 states don't define full-day kindergarten in 18, too, so that's over 60% of the United States. So I just found this on the internet.
It's do not, right?
Do not.
Do not define a full-day kindergarten in statute.
Yes.
It seems like there's a couple of issues. We're not here to take away the rights of individuals to have a half-day, because I think it's a great option, all right? So if there is a, a number of kids, and that's, that's a form of administration, how you administer the program. We're here to get all the other kids who want a full-time to have the right to go to full-time. So that's a separate issue, right? So we wanna, we want you to vote to give us a full-time option. Anybody that wants to opt-out as a part-time option can be in the part-time option, and then that's just an administration headache to you, that's all.
But the, but the decision isn't made in a bubble, that's the issue, is how do you, where do you put everybody?
Right now, the solution links the two.
And that's up to the superintendent, and the rest of the school committee, and the teachers who know how to best administer that. Here, the decision is by, hey, can we allow another full-time class? That's all we're asking. And then there's these rules against districts that you guys have across communities that you can't educate kids, even if you wanna drive their kids.
No, if you'd like to know the history of the district, until about 1994, 95, we were only regionalized for the high school, and at that point, the three towns had a vote that was very heated, in all three towns, the discussion to regionalize K to eight, and so this regional agreement of not going across towns was, was part of, of addressing all the concerns that the towns had for losing their identities and stuff. But whether you like it or not, that is the legal agreement that we have to abide by right now.
But the social agreement made in, in a bubble? Back then, in a time bubble, back in the time when there wasn't a need for that. Today, we have a different mechanism to adopt to it, but yet, we don't wanna change or break any rules or regulations, because they applied to some time in the past, where everybody felt that they had an identity, and at some point, everybody was driving a buggy, too. But then we decided to switch to cars.
Right, except that I would rather not spend district money addressing lawsuits when people sue us for violating the contract that we are currently about, supposed to abide by. We can, we can change, you know, we could change it-
He's gonna become a Stowe, a Stowe, because he would just move into the region, actually technically, I'm Polish background, he's got more Polish, and he speaks Polish, he's never gonna become a Stowe, Stowe, whatever you guys wanna indoctrinate him as. So there is that mentality, well, we have different regions. No, today, they're gonna be over-internet shooting stuff, and they're gonna be talking to other folks across all communities, so the communities are blending, regardless if we wanna stop this or not. They're gonna blend.
There was a hand here for a while.
Yeah, I'm particularly, was it me?
Yes.
I'm particularly concerned in the small number of students in Bolton that are gonna be in this special circumstance in these classes. I mean, we're talking about two kids in a class possibly, that are gonna be removed from the population of the class and sent off on their way. So I heard somebody mentioned earlier the possibility of doing an extended day beyond the half-day option, so that the kids that want a full-day in the school can join the half-day curriculum and stay beyond, and I feel like that would be a less expensive option for the district, to have somebody that is probably more affordable, who can reach the students and continue the learning, without taking away the opportunity from the half-day kids to have a good social experience, and then be able to go home with their kids. I, I just feel like it was brought up and then discounted, I just wonder, can we explore that?
We, we certainly could explore it, that, there's, we certainly could, it's just, it, it went away because parents didn't want it, but we certainly could explore it.
This is a transitional thing that you're talking about, three years?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe bring it back at that transitional time.
Sure.
Can I raise something, different, totally different perspective? I'm number two on the waitlist. I don't know what you guys', these numbers are. My son's gonna be six, three weeks after the start of school, and he's in half-day. It's absurd. He should be in first grade. So my Elena is in the same situation with her son Brock, Liz is in the same situation with her son Matthew. It's more than just access to full-time. We're talking about kids, to your point, we're not talking about just turning five, we're talking about turning six. They're gonna be behind if we don't get them into programs where they can be in an educational environment. My son right now is in daycare, he's out proponent.
Sure.
I want him in an educational environment. If it's not in Bolton, I'm in position to send him somewhere else, but I don't wanna have to matriculate him back into Bolton, into public schools. I want him to be with the kids he's gonna go to school with all the time.
So I have just a couple of points related to things that have come up this evening. The point that kindergarten is not mandatory. First, I don't think we should ever guide ourselves by the, the laws on books, I think we should be thinking about what's right, regardless of what, yes, it's not a law that every child goes to, to kindergarten, but that doesn't mean that, that that should be our guiding star. Most of what is in the budget is not mandatory. So to say that we don't wanna support this as a priority, because there are other things we might wanna support, there may be other things, but none of them are mandatory. We shouldn't be saying that we, that the reason we're not supporting this is because it's not mandatory, because having extra theater/drama programs, having more technology, having the tablets in the K through three classrooms, none of that is mandatory. And so at some point, yes, we do have to make priorities beyond just what the law states. Secondly, the point to the value of the model, currently, it's the only model on the table, we're working with what we have. There's a concern that it would be a detriment to the half-day children. I don't wanna speak to whether or not it would be a detriment to them, I think it's important to think, in part, there's gonna be a detriment to some children either way, or potentially, there could be. By saying that the 16 children in Bolton on the waitlist can't stay for the full day, wouldn't you also argue that's a detriment to them? And so to prioritize that we don't wanna detriment the seven children who want half-day at the cost of 16 children who want full-day seems backwards in terms of numbers, that we're prioritizing seven children over 16. I don't, I, I think there's, there's, it seems illogical to do that. Thirdly, in terms of the children leaving early, right now, at my son's preschool, kids leave at noon, and kids leave at rain. It's a very normal thing, they don't, the kids who leave at noon, they, they don't have issues with it, they don't cry, they're not upset, it's, it's a normalized part of their day, and I think if it's created as a normalized part of the day for the kindergarten children, they will see it that way. Everything in education is how you present it to the children. It is the adult's responsibility to create that culture. The teachers, I feel, in Bolton and across the three towns are very capable of doing that. We have very strong teachers, they can create that culture where it is normalized for children to leave at a certain time of the day. It's, as Michael has said, commonly done, and from our own experience, I've seen it done, my to, my son leaves earlier than other kids, and he's fine with it, it's normalized. Finally, to the concern of numbers fluctuating from year to year, that's not just a kindergarten question, that happens across all grade levels, and I don't think we can speak to the merits of this program because of number fluctuations. There was a concern about the freshman class has grown, that's a fluctuation in grade level, that's, that's across all grade levels, and shouldn't have any bearing on this program in particular, because you deal with that across all grade levels every year, and you're capable of doing that. So, thank you.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to say that I think, at the end of the day, this all boils down to choice and the opportunity to have the choice, and I think that we all, you know, we might all be on different sides of this. You know, some parents might say, this is best for my child to go half-day, obviously, there's many folks in the room here today who are saying, you know, it might be best for my child to go full-day, but it's the matter of the choice, and the, the matter of knowing your own child as a parent, and looking at your child and saying, this is what I know is right for you, and only you, as a parent, will know that. You know, and it's not to discredit anyone else's opinion, I've been on both sides of it, my daughter went half-day, I want my son to go full-day, I know him best, and I feel like that is best for him. But I understand the concerns on both sides, it's just, we've gotta find the right balance, whatever that may be, so that everyone has that choice and that opportunity, so that if, if we say, okay, kids, like, I want my child to go full-day, that we have the option as parents to say, that's what we wanna do, we wanna get him in there. And I mean, it's, it's a challenge being on, as I'm sure you all know, but being on a waitlist and not, you know, knowing and feeling very strongly that this is right for my child who's going to be six, basically shortly thereafter, after joining school, and he's a mature six, or a mature five now, but will be an even more mature six, and to pull him out half-day, on the flip side, the social issues on that are significant. He's gotta look at me and say, Mom, why am I not able to go for the rest of the time with everyone else? So I mean, absolutely, there's the debate on both sides of it, but I think it just boils down to choice. So if we can come to some nice place where it's, you know, folks who wanna send their kids half-day have the option, and folks who wanna send their kids full-day have that option, too. So, thank you.
We have to look over at parents to see what their timeline for decision-making is. So, for those parents who are on the waitlist that are in the room, how many of you have to make a decision and commit to another provider for, for kindergarten by March 15th? Just one of you.
Well, you're a kindergarten teacher, you could teach it yourself.
I don't have a choice.
Okay, so, so that's actually helpful, because your next, I mean, you have, they have to make this decision by March 11th. So if, I don't know if March 11th is any quicker for you, but that may give you a window of time to-
Pulse.
Pulse and do other things in terms of not having to make the decision tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just, I'm throwing it at you.
I just think we procrastinate difficult decisions all the time. I think there seems to be pretty clear agreement that we want to offer full-day for everyone next year. We have concerns about how we implement it, I agree with the person who says we can trust our educators to handle that. I say, I guess, would you entertain a motion?
I, I would entertain a motion, sure.
I, I move that we vote to approve the proposal that Michael made at the beginning of the meeting, so, you know, I'm sure the administration has heard the concerns about the mix of full and half-day, but we know that we wanna move towards full-day, and I haven't heard any proposed alternatives, so I wanna move forward.
We can't discuss that.
We're in the middle of a motion, so we can't vote right now.
Someone's got a second.
Oh, okay. A second. I wanna just drop my, I, I agree with you, Jeff, I think that this proposal is not ideal. I think it's a bummer that we've got kids coming and going in the same classroom, it is not perfect. I think the perfect scenario will be three years from now, when everybody gets to go full-day and nobody has to pay. In my opinion, that's what we should have, and that's what we're working towards and striving for. And in the meantime, in these next three years, we have to have an imperfect system. There's no way of getting around that. We can't have some people paying, some people staying, some people not paying, some people not staying. It's, it's imperfect, and I don't think there's any proposal that anybody can come up with that is perfect, and maybe I'm being pessimistic, but I don't think there is. I don't think there's a perfect proposal out there that we just haven't thought of yet. I think that, I think that we're gonna have imperfection for three more years. And, and so I think, it's my personal opinion, that the more, the more people that we can that the more, the more people that we can accommodate by doing this proposal as opposed to staying with the way it is and having all these unhappy people on the waitlist.
Or going directly to full-day for everybody, which would be taking away the choice.
Full-day for everybody would be in my opinion ideal, but we can't do it. But I mean, I don't, I don't think that would, I don't think that would pass in the budget. I might, I don't know. Is that a proposal that we should be considering?
I mean, that would be my preference by a long shot, except that I'm hearing concerns about, you know, parents who really seem to strongly prefer half-day. And I guess I'd rather
But do you think that they're strongly preferring half-day because
Of the coming due date?
No, because of the cost issue? We don't, we don't have any way.
Yeah, I'm sure some of them, yeah.
I'm sure some of them are too. So we don't have any way of figuring that out? How many people would really prefer half-day because of what a half-day is? Or how many people are choosing half-day because it's free?
So I don't But I don't think that's worth dismissing. Because what if, you know, 50 out of those 56 kids want half-day because they want a half-day and it's not financial? It's because that's what they believe in is right for their kid. So are we dismissing those kids, those families who think that's the right thing for them because another 50 think that's the right thing for their kid?
Yeah, so I don't know. But then that assumes that this model that we're going to have in three years, full-day, all-day, and it's free, is not perfect.
No, but then you have three years to prepare.
Exactly.
This is coming. Yeah, we can't do that right now because you're going to catch people completely that's not fair. But in three years, they'll know it's coming. It'll come up every year.
Why is it three years instead of just next year full-day?
So next year will be a third off, following year be, next year being F-16. Would be a third off, F-17 would be two-thirds off, and then F-18 would be free.
What do you mean a third off?
Yeah.
The tuition.
The fees would go down. So we'd be less dependent on
That's going to be a little
Probably a costly pushing enrollment.
Is there a reason why we're taking away tuition? Is that, is that just a book? Somebody, we're going to do a free kindergarten?
Because we believe in public education.
Right.
I understand that. The change is wonderful, but
This is state law.
But if people want full-day kindergarten and we offer to everyone, we can't make everyone pay, they need to have free access to the same education.
Cannot force people to pay.
Cannot force people to pay.
Okay, and so because we're going full-day kindergarten in three years, then we have to take away tuition?
We don't have to, but that's another conversation for F-16. That isn't part of this conversation.
Well, it is when you start talking about taking away a third, two-thirds, and a fourth.
We're not
That's a long-range plan.
That's the long-range plan.
Okay. So do we go back to the vote?
Does that mean the discussion's over?
Discuss away.
No, no, I'm just, I don't know the protocol.
What do we call the call to vote today?
There was a motion made and a second made.
Right, so discussion can continue until somebody says call to vote.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm waiting for someone.
I thought you had something to say, that's why.
No, I, I want there to be full-day kindergarten. I don't want to be forced to vote tonight on it.
I don't either.
I want full-day kindergarten. I, my kids, I paid for my kids to go to full-day kindergarten. I would pay for, oh, God. But I, I would, I would want everyone's child to have that right, to go to full-day kindergarten.
So what's going to change in two weeks?
Well, I didn't real, so we have to make this decision by March 11th.
Yes, because it's part of the budget.
Because we'll know what the money is. Are you, well, okay, just this is a total scenario. Are you willing to make this change right now for this money at the expense of just, just not going to happen, but a chemistry teacher?
That's my hesitation. That's my hesitation with the decision right now.
First-grade teacher somewhere else.
I don't know.
Listen, we can make up hypotheticals that will dissuade us from doing it.
Oh, Jeff, that is so Pollyanna, though.
No, what, no, not at all. Not very nice.
You told me I was kind last time.
Come on, pick it up. We can think of a different scenario.
Right.
The scenario, yeah, we can think of any kind of scenario that would throw a wrench in this. But if we vote on it tonight, oh, here it is. Doing that only weakens, you know, our proposal.
How?
Okay, when we go to the towns and say, well, we're proposing putting this in as part of the budget as opposed to, we've already put this in because as the school committee, the policy-setting body for the schools, we believe this is important and it should be a top priority. It's going to be one of the things we do.
Correct.
And, you know, we need to ask the towns to pay for it, obviously. That's a better position to go in than like wishy-washy.
But it's one small I don't think that's where she wants it.
It's not. This is like, this is providing a 21st century education.
This is foundational.
You can't, you can't not have full-day kindergarten. It's, it's an embarrassment.
Okay, so we, we approve this and then we have to run the $165,000.
We don't.
First-grade teacher gets funded, so, and now you have 27 kids in your class and you're going to come back and say, we need another first-grade teacher. So what do we do then? Then what gets tied? I just think, once we know the money we have, I think, I believe that's everyone's opting for a full-day kindergarten.
But that's not how the budget works. We don't go and say, what money are you going to give us? And then we'll plan around it. We go to them, we go to the towns and say,
Say this is what we need.
Here is what we need.
And then they say what they're going to, whether they're going to approve it or not. And if they don't approve the budget, then we need to come back and say, okay, we'll take away this and hopefully you'll approve this one.
But Jeff, if we vote tonight, we can't take this away ever. This is our vote and we have to find the money for it. That's all we're saying. If we say yes tonight, it goes in no matter what. We have to negotiate later. Something else loses.
And we've got to come up with
Versus the way we have the budget as a whole.
Right, I think we can make a case for full-day kindergarten that will persuade the towns to come up with an extra $165,000 or up to $200,000. I, I believe that.
Yes, my other question is, if we defer this vote and make it part of the regular budget vote, are we deferring our commitment to it completely? Or when we vote in, in a month, are we going to vote then to have a firm commitment that no matter what, we'll, we'll stick with this plan? Or will it be open for, for, you know, on the table of discussion if the towns don't approve the budget? Or conversely, if we get a lot less state aid than we expected?
I have a question. So this is my first year through this whole process. Why is this, why does it seem to roll? Like, what happened last year that this didn't get done? Or was the numbers not there last year? Like, what was it, did we not hear?
I think the numbers were different.
The numbers worked out that we had
There weren't so many people on a waitlist.
We were able to put them into classrooms.
Just by chance, I mean by population.
By demographic, whatever happened?
Yeah.
So this wasn't on
It wasn't a debate like this last year.
Right, we did, we did have the same debate around the preschool classroom, but it wasn't
But our preschool is pretty much fully funded. We don't, we don't really absorb any of that, I thought.
That is true.
So I don't know why you would even debate that.
It was a short debate.
Okay, thank you.
Well, do we, you want to call the vote?
Yeah, I just want to say, I understand the concerns, I share the concerns. But the concerns don't make me think that offering full-day kindergarten isn't the right thing to do for each year. So why don't we do it now? Signal to the towns that it's a high priority and let the poor parents make their plans for next year.
I, I agree. I mean, I, I think that, I've already said it, so I don't need to repeat myself. But it is not perfect. But I don't think we're going to come up with anything that is perfect. And in my opinion, if we can satisfy the most number of kids in the district, then that's our responsibility and our duty.
Do you need this kind of people who don't want the half-day?
I'm sorry?
Well, what is the difference in numbers between the people that want the half-day and the people that want non-waitlist? Is it equal? I mean, it's, it's
It's not.
136 to 56.
But we're not
But we're also not taking away that choice.
This year.
It's just different.
All right. All those in favor of Jeff's motion to, are we voting to vote? Are we actually voting?
Actually voting the motion.
Yeah.
Okay. So all those in favor of passing the proposed kindergarten plan? All those opposed? Abstaining?
So does that mean it goes without ado?
And it just passed, right? All right.
So that's experienced deja vu? But you want to talk about preschool?
No. Although it's fully funded, self-funded. Yes, let's talk about preschool.
Just, just the typical peers are fully funded. We pay for the special needs portion.
A reluctant
Me too.
It's not a perfect system.
It's not perfect.
I know. And it's not going to be perfect for three years. Even then, it's
Some people won't think it's perfect.
Can't be 5-4.
5-4.
Oh, 5-4.
With the half-day, are you still going to allow blessing from center over to stepping stones? If it's a lot
I'm sure we will.
That that'll continue?
Sure.
Do you want to have a preschool discussion?
Yeah, that, that's equally as important. I don't know that any parents here are preschoolers, but that's equally as important in terms of time, time-sensitive. In some respects, more because for the typical peers, they're, they are going to find something else outside of the school.
Okay, can you tell us the story?
So it's, it's pretty much the same circumstance. We, we do feel we have need for a classroom. What we hope it to be is going to be a class of 15 typical and 15 special needs student, no, it's going to be 15 and five special needs students for a total of 20 in, in Stowe. And because we've already identified the five students, and so this would be mirroring the program we have here. And so we feel there's a, if we don't have it, we're going to be challenged to find spaces for those students in our existing programs. And those special needs students might go out of district, which would be a long-term financial impact to us.
Special needs, have we talked?
What's that?
How special, I mean, we don't have the resources for these special needs students.
So, well, we don't have spaces for them. So we run specific programs for the types of special needs. So these are intensive special needs students that have been identified through early intervention. So we need to have five slots for those students to, to take. Currently, our intensive needs, we only have one opening. And so we're tight for space. So opening this classroom would give us the most flexibility of either having a five and 15 or an eight, eight and a seven, depending on what happens to other students that
So would this classroom pay for itself or would not because it subsidizes, because the special education students do not pay?
Correct. So this, so for the special education component, we pay and contribute. But for the typical peers, they pay for their, their portion of time.
Eight typical peers and five?
So right now, we're leaning towards doing a 15 and five. But it, it may turn out to be an eight and a seven.
Is this across the district of Justin Stowe?
So these would be, so the, our preschools, it, they come from all over the district and we do put them in different communities because preschool is a part of the regional agreement.
Right.
So these would be students from across the district.
Do we have identified sufficient typical peer support for this?
Yes, yes, we could fill more classrooms.
What do you mean?
So that would subsidize the cost?
Right.
There's more interest in preschool. Right, we have spaces for even adding a school.
Right. The difference is that, while we can, we can fill the majority of students, families who, their first choices. If we add this class and we go with the 15, if we go with the eight and seven, it'll be, they'll be their second choices, which would be like three mornings a week or two mornings a week, depending on circumstances.
Do any of, that you know, the, say we have a 15, five preschool class, any of the students that are coming in, special needs students, that they require one-on-one aid, that there's going to be more of a financial?
I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that specifically. We're, we're only planning on one aid in the, in the budget. Circumstances change and we have to reorganize whenever that happens. So I'm not overly concerned about that, but right now, we're not planning for that.
And if, if we didn't provide the extra space, then what would the district do?
So we'd really have to go back to the drawing board in terms of what, you know, so for example, we might have a student that has special needs and their IEP only calls for two days a week, but the parent opts for the third day. We might have to, because that's technically a special needs slot, we may have to look at pairing them down to the two days so that we can give, you know, and get it more tight around the district so that that happens.
So right now, if we have space, we offer them?
We offer them as opposed to their choices.
If even if they only qualify for two days a week, if we have a third day, we operate.
If the parent wants it.
So what's the question?
So the question is, do you, do you agree that we are going to add that classroom? And if so, then we can send out those commitment letters to those parents that they would, that this class will go forward regardless so that they can make their plans, just like kindergarten.
So you currently have space for the IEPs that you need, but we want the option to open up another class and get another teacher to have another class in another town?
So we know of four students that right now, we're going to be tight to figure out how to service their, their special needs. So this class would give us that flexibility to be able to do it without pairing back existing circumstances for families.
So what would that look like, the pairing back scenario?
Well, the, the example that I gave would be the best one. I'd have to talk more with Tracy Conti to understand better how we would do that because I'm not sure that we truthfully can. I mean, I don't know how many opportunities like that there are. So we propose this because we have these students in mind to go into a preschool class.
And all our preschool classes are integrated?
Integrated, yes.
The budget impact? I'm sorry, did you say?
So we're hiring one new teacher full-time and one new preschool assistant full-time.
How much is that?
So it's $85,000.
So, but how much of an offset roughly could we anticipate? You know, sort of similar to the kindergarten fee?
Well, I can't remember what the full-day tuition is. Is it, if it's
$21?
But I think overall, if we are on the eight, seven plan, it would be about half the total cost. Even though there would be probably a special needs component, save any specific needs for individual students such as an aid or something like that. A 15, five would pretty much actually, depending on who we hire, cover the total cost. If I recall, the tuition is correct.
The tuition is $3,000 to $3,100.
The tuition is three thousand to thirty-one hundred?
Six thirty...it's five days, six thirty, so, yes, so that's...yeah, so, I was doing that right, so, yes, so, if we end up being able to go to fifteen-five, it would cover the base class virtually in total, assuming we were able to get it fully subscribed to, obviously. If we had to go to eight-seven for, you know, needs, it would be about half the total cost. So, it can be negligible cost, short to be.
Well, yeah, you feel like you're going to have...
Yeah, we've already had it opened house, and the parents have signed up, so we feel we're going to be able to the fifteen.
So, you do have typical kids this...
Uh-huh. Yes.
Completely offset the cost, is that what you're saying?
It could.
It could be close.
Pretty close.
Because you figure the cost, because you're getting about...
We did the numbers last time.
Right.
And it was, right, it was like at a wash, pretty much, if you fill the class, which there's high confidence that it would be filled.
Right. But I can figure it out, I guess.
And we're keeping the kids in the district, which is important to us, right? We want our kids in our district.
And if they have to go out, that's a dependent on your expense.
Right.
It is.
In some cases, for up to age twenty-two, so, I mean, it's a whole...
It would only be for a year if they could brick it to come in kindergarten.
Once they get placed, placement is very hard to get back, you know, very early like that, we often do, but it can be hard.
Okay.
Is there half we work for, or is it hard wait to get them back?
It is.
So, just to reiterate and to be clear, hopefully, if we were to vote yes to this...well, no motion has been made yet, but if the motion were to be made and we were to vote yes, it could potentially be at absolutely no cost to the district.
Negligible, yes.
And the probability of that is better than seventy-five percent?
Definitely.
Okay.
And the savings are the...the...
Potential savings.
The potential of not having to send kids out of district on our dime is great.
You mean down the road?
Right.
The long-term implications.
The longer...right, we are preventing future costs if we have a preschool.
By no cost, but possibly.
No, definitely, I can't...
Are these students from Stowe? Is that why the preschool is going to be in Stowe rather than a different town? Good question.
There's a good...there's a mix. The majority of the ones that were...that needed full day, I think, did end up to be from Stowe, but I haven't looked at those by town in a while.
Is it because there's space in Stowe?
Nope.
No, there is no space.
There is Stowe classroom.
So, shouldn't we know where we're going to place this, since we don't...it's not under the regional district there? Shouldn't it go where the most kids are from, rather than earmarking it, saying this preschool is going to happen in Stowe?
Yeah. So, it's going to Stowe because they have a classroom available that's already outfitted, so there's a cost savings right there, number one.
So, in the new school?
In the new school. And so, I mean, that's where...and we don't have any other preschool classrooms available.
Anywhere?
Anywhere, unless we break into Emerson.
But are you distributing the children so that they're local to where they are?
We will do more of that, actually, with this, so we'll be able to distribute a little bit more evenly.
Yeah, you can use your blessing, right?
Only for the special needs students.
Yeah. For preschool students. Go ahead, Jeff.
Sure. I move that we vote in favor of the proposal to add preschool classroom for next year.
Second. All those in favor?
All right. Wow, starting on the budget, and I feel kind of beat up.
I know, I was going to...yeah, so, I mean, that's the bulk of the bulk...
That's like double increase, right there.
We need to take that out now someplace.
Right there, all that increase. It's the big bulk of it.
So, we're getting through the books?
I mean, eighty percent of our...
Look forward.
Eighty percent of our proposal increase is employees and health benefits cost.
We just add...
When did the discussion...
It's already built in the proposal. It's not like we just committed to adding this to the budget.
We're tightening these programs, no matter what the outcome.
Right. Well, I just want to be clear, it's not that...we didn't add more.
Right.
That's right.
Because that's what it was sounding like, and that's not what we just did.
Right.
It's already in the proposed budget.
It's in the proposed budget.
Right.
Jeff assures us that the towns are going to vote for this proposal budget.
Guaranteed.
Okay, so, FY fifteen budget is special one.
I have no idea, but should be in there.
Okay, can we move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, budget discussion, just as a reminder for everybody and for those who might not know, we had an initial budget proposal presented to us in January twenty-eighth, and then we had a budget workshop on Saturday, a four-and-a-half-hour workshop going over every detail with the administrators in each building. And now, we have had time to digest it, think about it, and it's time to now come back with a discussion and check in and figure out our next steps. I know that Lorraine and I have been at the Bolton Advisory Committee meeting and had discussions with people about their wants and desires. Comes as no surprise, probably, that, you know, they would like to see the budget not be as high as it is. I think I'll throw this out as an idea for our next step. We'd like to see maybe some Plan B and Plan C, kind of like we did last year with just what it would look like if we were to try for point-two-five percent less of a reduction and then a point-five percent less...less than increase, I'm sorry. That makes sense. So, the proposed budget is a three-point-seven-two increase to the overall budget. So, we'd like to see one that's three-point-four-seven percent and three-point-two-two percent. I don't know if anybody else wants to see that or...time to discuss.
Would that come out of everything, anything in the budget?
Well, it would be up to Michael and George to...
Make recommendations.
Put recommendations together of how those budget reductions would be met. And then, it would be up for us to decide what we could stomach and what we couldn't, or maybe we stick with the budget as proposed, but at least have...I think we did this last year.
It's an exercise, but at least we've looked at the options, and we can say we've looked at the options.
So, maybe George can help us a little bit. So, I think you were talking total budget?
Correct, the total district budget, not the assessment budgets.
Right. So, looking at...so, looking at the total budget, so, one percent is going to be roughly four-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars to cut. So, quarter of a percent is going to be about a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. So, to get to half...I'm just giving you the increments of the amounts, so... What's that?
Are we over fifty million yet?
Yes. The total budget is over fifty million, yes, but we buy it out of local revenues.
So, I mean, people can throw out, maybe those aren't the right numbers, or maybe you don't want to do this. I don't know, it's just a place to start the discussion.
By how much?
Yeah.
We're at three-point-seven-two total budget.
But when you say it needs to go down, do you have a visual on where you want to see it go down? Because I don't want to just see it.
You know, I guess what I'm having a hard time with is, since I've been here, the budget's gone up ten million dollars. And it's huge.
How long is that?
How long?
Six years.
Six years, and it's gone up ten million dollars?
Well, you have to look at the population increase also.
But the increased spend's a percentage?
I don't know.
I don't think that the school population does.
Well, look at the school district numbers alone.
When I started here, we were thirty-two hundred, we're at thirty-five hundred now, so we've increased by about three hundred.
And how much has the budget increased?
Well, FY eleven budget was...so, it's forty-three million dollars. This proposed budget is fifty million dollars, so over the last five years, it's gone up seven million dollars. But I believe the FY eleven budget was...
I think that was the...
Seven million, did you just say, in the last five years? Or five million in the last seven years?
Seven in the last five.
Seven in the last five.
Just about the seven in the last five.
And then, the enrollment has gone from what in the last...over the last five?
But, I mean, this is a more...this is a much trickier question than where sort of hinting at. I mean, you can't just say, oh, it's gone up a lot over these years. Everything's gone up, and a lot of the things the school district has to pay for, the cost rise way faster than the rate of inflation.
Right.
Fuel costs have gone up faster than the rate of inflation. God knows healthcare has gone up faster than the rate of inflation.
Right, but all of our citizens have to pay those increases as well at home, and we're on top of that taxing them here, too. So, instead of being fiscally conservative in times of economic downturn, I don't know if it's, you know, fiscally responsible to just say, well, we need this, like, we do. It's not a fiscally responsible citizen, in my opinion, to do things like that.
Well, I think that that's a really...
General statement.
Difficult statement to make, because I think there's so many things that have to go into this decision about how much we spend.
I agree, but I don't want to just say, oh, seven million in five years. I think that was a great point to say, wow, seven million in five years, to me at least, who've never been through this.
But it...
But I think the implication that we're being irresponsible is... No, I'm not saying that we're irresponsible. I'm saying that we have to be fiscally responsible and look at money to be spent and not make just decisions.
But my point wasn't that we shouldn't be conservative and careful with everyone's money. My point was, it's a much trickier question, has it gone up a reasonable amount or not a reasonable amount? It's much harder than just saying, wow, it's a big number, because, like, when you ask the school budget, the school district, to keep their budget, let's say, the same, or to go up less than their costs go up between inflation and the other things I was mentioning, you're really asking them to cut.
To cut services.
And they've been asked to do that, my perception is, and I don't have the actual data, and I would love to have it, but my perception is, they've been doing that for a while. They've been finding ways to save money here and to save money there, and we've been delaying kindergarten, for instance, and we've been, you know, putting off things that we do believe are important. So...
But we're not asking them not to have the services, because there are institutions out there that are, you know, there's STEM money, there's all kinds of money out there that we could actually...not us, but the school system could be going after, and I don't hear a lot of donations or a lot of grant money going after, except for, you know, maybe the two thousand dollars they get for robotics, or, you know, because we sign off on them, and those numbers are very low. And I keep hearing about these large numbers of money out there for schools to use in technology and STEM and all this.
You have to look at who their...the funders are looking to give money to. They're not necessarily targeting...
An affluent suburb.
Exactly, affluent suburban school systems. You know, it works against us, and that is, you know, problematic, obviously.
But, so, can I ask one question, a qualifying question? So, if your finance committee asks you to have Michael find that number, I thought there's only a small percentage of the budget that's even negotiable for change. There's so much of the budget we can't even touch. So, I don't like saying one percent of the budget. I like to say, I would rather personally, so if I was to go back to my finance committee, say, I can give you that one percent, but I'm only allowed to take this percentage. So, you're asking me to cut in twenty percent of my part that I can even affect, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but we're talking about the percentage of the increase.
Oh, you're not talking the percentage of the budget.
Do you see what I mean?
Yes, I see.
Right. So, it's the incremental change from last year to this year.
So, what's the percentage of the increase that we just...
On the proposal was three-point-seven-two.
Okay, so, that's how much money?
What's the total dollar amount?
The total dollar is fifty million, five-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars.
Yeah, but I think she's asking the incremental...
What's the increment, what's the percentage that you would have to reduce the budget to comply with the financial committee's request?
So, a quarter of the total budget.
Their request wasn't that, we just...
Oh.
Right. I mean, they just said, Kate should do better. I mean, and it's the same...we're having the same discussion now that we had the other night, and I might bring up the same arguments, which are that, you know, we looked at comparable school districts and which they're all spending.
I'm for the budget, so you don't have to sell me on it. I'm just trying to make sure that we're...
Yeah, we're actually not, I mean, our...we're not spending more than other districts, is what I'm trying to say, and we have plenty of proof of that.
We're below the state average for per pupil.
For the whole budget. What is the state average for?
What's that?
What is the state average for?
It's about thirteen thousand, six-eighty-six.
It's thirteen, six-thirty-six.
Six-thirty-six.
I thought we were at fourteen.
No. Sorry, twelve, twelve, six-eighty-eight.
It's absurd.
This is last year.
So, I mean, it's easy to say things like the seven million dollars, but if you look at over the last six years, our budget increases in the last six years in falls. One, in FY ten, it was one-point-four-six. In FY eleven, it was point-one percent, just over zero, point-one percent. In FY twelve, it was two-point-one-two percent. In FY thirteen, it was three-point-four-nine percent. In FY fourteen, it was three-point-one-four percent. In FY fifteen, it was three-point-seven-two percent. So, if you look at that over six years, that's about a fourteen percent increase over those six years, and that's just a little bit, about two-point-three percent average over six years. So, if you look at it in that level, I think it's a very responsible, well-crafted spend budget.
Two-point-three percent average?
That's what you're saying, someone asked me.
What's that?
Did you say two-point-three percent average?
Annual over the last five years.
Over the last six years.
Probably averages out to about the rate of inflation. I don't know, how are you keeping it down that low?
Good job, John.
I mean, honestly, how's that possible?
It's difficult.
Right.
And, you know, there are places where we have not moved as quickly as I would like because we haven't been able to invest resources to do that. You know, and this budget starts to do that, like all daycare. And this is the first year to make that kind of attempt. I think the other part of this conversation is the next piece on the agenda, which is about revenues. You know, part of what we need to be doing is articulating what the schools need and what they have to...what we feel we need to have to keep everything we have moving forward and getting better. And, you know, part of that is affordability, and I think part of fiscal responsibility is understanding what ability to pay do the towns have. And, you know, when we look at that information, the towns are very...are healthy. And so, I think that we want to be careful not to be quick to think that we have to cut, and maybe we do, but that doesn't necessarily have to be the first place we look, because we think that the towns aren't available to pay their assessment if this budget were to pass. Because, you know, I think the...there is sometimes a disconnect between what voters want and what local boards want, because their objectives are sometimes disjointed. So, we, you know, when we have a budget as, I think, as close as this one in terms of what we're trying to move forward with and inch forward with, I think we want to be careful not to cut off our noses by our face in terms of what we're proposing.
I don't disagree with you at all. In fact, I agree with you. I think, though, as a show of good faith, if...maybe a suggestion is, rather than what we had talked about, which is a certain percentage reduction of a proposed budget, maybe if we say, you know, don't take away your ability to make the decision...
don't take away your ability to make the decisions that you are entrusted to make. Where and what do you think you could move, remove, shift, shift, and come back and say, okay, you know what? We've gone through it again, and we know there are places we can scrub a little bit, so here's where we're at. Without us prescribing a percentage, that may be another option, right? To say, we're going to respect you guys, to understand that we're in a position where we're going to be asked, we should be asked. Where do you think, and what do you think that would look like? And prudently, respectfully.
I mean, I, and I can tear it so that you guys can see it broken down anyway, you know.
It doesn't, I mean, that was exactly the concept we were looking for. It doesn't have to be the exact percentages that we were talking about. But if we had a Plan A, which is what we've already been presented with, and then we have a, maybe a B and a C. And... Yeah. That's, that's what we were suggesting, but...
Yeah.
Then we could see what the cost to our students is, so...
But we would also see what your priorities are, too.
Right.
Which is interesting to me.
Since we have a new principal at the high school, and he is, I think he's presented quite a few times here already for us. And, you know, at the last meeting, we talked a lot about, you know, a district as a whole and how it's rated and its past school. You know, I really want to say I think his contribution of his needs was important. So, that's an area I would want to see decrease personally, so that's just me personally.
Yeah, the high school seems like it's at a bigger deficit than the schools. Than the middle school and the elementary schools. Space constraints, teaching constra, I mean, the teaching resources. Yeah, I mean, the technology, blah, 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 curriculum.
I feel that, yeah.
It's up to date in technology and curriculum, but other, there are definitely, the building is definitely a, a piece of the puzzle and staffing.
But even you said offerings and staffing and...
But you don't think there are classes that he thinks he wants to add regardless of...
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, all right, I misunderstood.
Absolutely. No, I think that we are definitely, you know, here are, he and I have discussed, you know, that there are, you know...
And I frankly think, I'm really impressed with the innovative way he's approaching adding these classes, taking, you know, finding ways to work science and technology into non-science and technology-related subjects. I think that's really important.
So, what do we think? Are there certain...
To the next meeting?
Yeah. Is that enough direction, or do you want a specific number to shoot for, or a percentage to shoot for? Or...
Well, I'll, I'll make a list of things that I think, you know, because I was saying earlier in finance, you know, when I build a budget with each person, it's like a puzzle. And so, if you take out a piece, I still have to kind of cover that in some way. So, I got to figure out, sometimes taking out a hundred thousand dollars means I may have to add twenty thousand dollars over here because I have to make sure that that's taken care of. So, but I'll work with the principals, and we'll come up with a list, and we presented it at the, what's it, to twenty-fifth? I think so.
That'd be great, thank you. Everybody happy with that?
Yes.
I did have a question, and I don't know where it goes, so I'm just pulling it out there. Over the years, you know, you hear about zero-based budgeting, where you start at zero. And I know that you don't go all the way down to zero, but have you ever, with our budget, started at zero?
Yeah, we have, we have. You know, I've, I don't think I've done it this year, as part of the first year that I haven't done it. I used to refer to it as modified, modified zero-based budgeting, because there are some costs that are fixed costs that I can't, you know, take out of the, out of the picture. Certainly, when we look at a portion of site-based funds, we can go down to zero because, you know, conceptually, you can go down to zero.
Right.
Teachers would say, oh, but I need my workbooks because that's part of how I teach. So, that, we can't zero those out. So, it quickly gets put back together again, and you're back to a certain level. What I generally tell the principals is, you know, anything that is a new item that is a thousand dollars or more, then, you know, we need to take a look at that and pay attention to that. But other things that you've done year after year after year, workbooks, whatever, that, don't bother taking that apart because we know we need those.
Any other questions or discussion items around the budget? Okay. And then, our last item on the agenda are the policies. Two weeks ago, it was a first reading.
Right. And we didn't meet to discuss, but there were no recommended changes from us.
Except for the fundraising.
Yeah, the fundraising. Says fundraising. I'm like, wow, there you go. I want to go to Nishoba.
It's one of our new courses. Entrepreneurial. So, you can take them all together or individually?
Does anybody have any comments, suggestions, problems, concerns? Okay, take a motion?
I make a motion to accept the wellness fund raising and student disciplinary interventions policy as presented.
Second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Citizens' comments, I think we kind of handled unless there are any others, okay? Anybody have any agenda items to be added for future meetings, other than what we've talked about?
Do we want to... No.
I think that we're looking for one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?